Good evening and welcome. I'm Mayor Karen Davis, and on behalf of the City of Glendora, we welcome you here this evening. We hold these events on a quarterly basis to recognize people for accomplishments, to recognize groups in our community for extraordinary service. This evening's event can be viewed on our media center, on our city website. But one of the most important things about these quarterly presentations is it gives us a chance to celebrate our people, because our citizens are our most important resource and asset, and so we celebrate that and celebrate the opportunity to thank you and recognize you for all that you have done. Joining me here tonight is Councilmember Judy Nelson.[61.64][61.64](APPLAUSE). Our other three colleagues have some other commitments this evening, and they weren't able to be here. One of the things that Community Services Commission does each year is honor Glendorans for their outstanding volunteer service to the youth and senior citizens of our community. These individuals are the recipients of awards named for individuals who were recognized and remembered for their commitment to community service above self, who exemplify the values that we treasure and hold dear. This year, we'll be recognizing individuals deserving of the 40th Annual William E. Buck Dunham Award. This award was named in honor of William E. Buck Dunham and is awarded to individuals who have made outstanding contributions to the youth of Glendora and an area other than sports. So at this time, I'd like to invite Howard to come forward. And we are going to be presenting the award, and now we need the drum roll, to Gerald and Anne Croissant, if they could please come forward.[132.66][132.66](APPLAUSE). Dr. Gerald and Dr. Anne Croissant have made numerous contributions to our community. Most of you that have had the opportunity to go to Colby Trail, that is one of the most notable places that they have given of their time and talents, and we celebrate the many ways in which they've enriched and enhanced our community by contributing to outdoor education and helping to maintain the beauty and vitality of our hills. And Howard, would you like to say anything on behalf of Community Services Commission?
They're just wonderful.[177.31][177.31](APPLAUSE). Couldn't hear me, huh? Okay. They've done a wonderful job for the community, and this award is well-deserved, and we appreciate everything you've done for the community. Thank you.[192.12][192.12](APPLAUSE).
From the senior citizens to the youth of Glendora. Should we start with that? Service doesn't quit. It continues, and it starts really with your kids and grandkids, and as they grow up and they become members of the community and continuing to serve. And I have been on the email all day today, and so that's why we're like getting here, setting up new projects and new programs. And my husband is watching me, making sure I get fed, and also just running around, too. He loves the Colby Trail. He's up there every chance he can get, and we certainly enjoy being members of the community. Thank you.[246.62][246.62](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much. It's good to be here, and I just appreciate the recognition, and I enjoy working with my wife on the trail.
And all our friends who are here. Thank you.[264.41][264.41](APPLAUSE).
Just as with what you have contributed by planting trees for future generations, we know that the knowledge that you've imparted and the service that you have shown is also planting seeds for the future, and so we thank you for that and celebrate all that will grow from what you've contributed to Glendora. So congratulations again.[289.27][289.27](APPLAUSE). At this time, I would like to call up Acting Assistant Chief Jim Enriquez to make a presentation on behalf of LA County Fire Department, and as he makes his way up here, just another opportunity for us to say thank you. As we think of the Colby Trail, we think of our foothills and how appreciative we are of the work that LA County Fire Department did, not only during the Colby Fire, but every day on behalf of all of us. So thank you and welcome.[331.00][331.00](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, mayor, councilmember, city manager, staff, and audience. I'm Jim Enriquez, LA County Fire Department, your local assistant chief. I'm in active capacity, and we're here to, of course, serve. And with us is our local engine company personnel from 86 Offhamillion. Captain, can you introduce, Captain, I want to introduce you, please introduce your crew, and then we'll talk about why we're here. Go ahead and introduce your crew, Cap.
This is Engineer Pfeifer, and this is firefighter Craig.
Thank you.[371.21][371.21](APPLAUSE). We just wanted you to have an understanding of who serves the City of Glendora, and most recently, we were, a couple months ago, approached by CDS Insurance Company, and with a gracious offer to provide us with this generous gift. And so that said, they presented us with a dollar amount and something they would like to purchase that would benefit the community. And so we worked with the CDS Insurance representatives to identify a tool that was truly beneficial. And I'd like to introduce the representative, and if you could do a self-introduction, please, and just tell us about CDS Insurance and then what you have for us.
Well, good evening. I'm Patty Nierhoff with CDS Insurance Services. We're right up the street there, right next to Chase Bank, and proud to be part of the community of Glendora. And you're gonna have to help me with what I'm presenting as far as the name. It's a fancy case.
So that's, so we worked with their office in identifying a tool, so I'm gonna open this up so there's no surprises. And when they identified a dollar amount that they were willing to provide us with, we're going, wow, that's actually a lot. So this tool right here, this little thing is, almost represents $8,000. And why is that such expensive a tool? Well, the fire department and fire service in general has progressed over time, but one of the truly innovation tools that is now incorporated, yet however still somewhat cost prohibitive for the local engine companies that each one have, is this, and this is called a thermal imager. And what this will do for us, and more importantly for you, is help us find you in obscured areas. This is a heat-seeking, identifying imager where it distinguish heat patterns, and we can, as part of our objectives, initially, we have a house fire or any event where our vision is obscured, we can't see very well. We can't see through the smoke often. It's manual labor, crawling the grounds and finding your filling and hoping we find a body if somebody's there, but more importantly, hoping we do not find a body. But nevertheless, it's done just by truly visually, I mean, filling and crawling and clearing each room. This will help advance that effort tremendously. Once we turn this on, our lead firefighter can go carry this, look through the screen, and identify the heat signatures of a warm body or anything that is presenting heat. More importantly, it would also identify rooms that might be closed or heat that's hidden behind these closed doors where you open it may cause a flashover. In addition, we use it for our roof operations when we're ventilating. Our firefighters will climb on top of the roof and actually look through the ceiling to see exactly where the origin of the roof is, which will prevent us from stepping in this area that might be compromised through the heat. This is a tremendous tool that will save our lives and your lives. So this was a tremendous gift, and as I said before, most of our truck companies have them because it is cost prohibitive, but our engine companies do not. So when somebody makes an offer to offer, to provide us a tool, we graciously accept this. So on behalf of the men and women of Los Angeles County Fire Department, my chief, Daryl Osby, and of course, our local engine company, Engine 86 Personnel, and citizens of Glendora, we graciously accept this tremendous gift, so thank you.[582.16][582.16](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much, Mr. Enriquez, and thank you very much to CDS Insurance for helping to keep our community safe. And partnership with LA County Fire Public Safety is provided by the Glendora Police Department, and along with the men and women in uniform, it always takes the citizens as well to create that teamwork, to provide a safe community and to meet the needs of our citizens. At this time, I'd like to call up Officer Mike Howell, and he will give a little background on our next commendation to a Glendora resident who went above and beyond in helping others. Officer Howell.
As Mayor said, oftentimes, we do rely on the public for help, offer service where we maybe fall a little short, where we can't provide the service that we wanted to do. Such a case happened with a resident here a couple months back, and I'll give you a little background on what did occur. About two months ago, a concerned citizen came to me, and he was concerned because there was a young homeless girl in the area. She was sleeping in around this area here that we're in now. And the concern was that she was so young, young twenties, she's a very small petite girl, and he's concerned that she was out, you know, homeless by herself. So I gave him my contact information so he could give it to her, and she called me, made contact, and I met with her. And she wanted to meet with me because she had some concerns. One major concern was that at nighttime, when she slept out here on the patio or nearby, there's a guy that she had met in the past, and this guy was coming around and was, in the middle of the night, she'd wake up and she'd see him standing over, looking at her. And this didn't happen only once, it happened several times, so she was highly concerned for her safety. And also, she was looking for help, a way to get out of the situation that she was in at that point in time in her life. And in Glendora, we work, do the best we can to work with those who are less fortunate, that are homeless and in the street. Unfortunately, my resources aren't as quick as I'd like them to be. A lot of times, I have to apply, make an application for somebody to get into a home. It may take a couple months for it to come through. But with this female, Misty, I want to help her a lot sooner than that. Let me go back in time a little bit before this. So I met Misty about two months ago. About two days prior to meeting her, I was called to a home regarding a theft report, and I met Ms. Valerie Dos, one of our residents. And speaking with her, it became very clear to me, she's someone who cared quite a bit. There were several people in her home that she was assisting at that point in time. I talked to her about her past, and she mentioned there were several people in the past she assisted. And when I was talking to Misty, I thought about Valerie, and I thought about giving her a call and seeing if she could help us out. I hesitated in doing that because I knew how busy Valerie was. She has a full-time job, a second job on top of that, she works, and she's taking care of a lot of people in her house that have other needs. But the thought was strong to give her a call, and so I called up, called Valerie, and I had mentioned the issue with Misty. Valerie is more than happy to help out. That evening, she went out and met with Misty, right here by the library. Right after that, she's on the phone, talking to her contacts, trying to find her place to stay. Within two days, she had found a place for Misty, a home for her to go into, and Misty was able to get off the street at that point in time, get away from the trouble that she was facing, and find a safe place to be. And for Valerie going above and beyond her duty as a citizen, we'd like to thank her and recognize her tonight. Valerie?[846.13][846.13](APPLAUSE). Says certificate of recognition honoring Valerie Dos. In recognition for going the extra mile and assisting the Glendora Police Department to find housing for a young adult, your actions have made a difference, from the city council.[878.44][878.44](APPLAUSE). Yeah, I did talk to Valerie a moment ago, and she had an update on Misty. They've been talking through Facebook, and I asked her to share a couple words about the update.
Well, happy to be here. I was pretty surprised when I got the call, so thank you that he recognized that I did that. I talked to Misty on Facebook. She's doing great. She wasn't allowed to have any communication with her mother until she got herself together, and so I found her a place. She did great. We got her settled. We took her to the beach. We tried to show her the good life for a while, you know? And finally, her mom told her she can come home. She's in Oregon now with her parents, and she looks great. So we do keep touch. I want to know how she is, so she'll call me up or Facebook me, and it's special, you know? I feel like now I have some kind of connection to a girl that I didn't even know. And he asked me to help her, and I was more than happy to do that. I didn't think she would do it, but she did. So, yeah, she's doing great now.[960.13][960.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Officer Howell, and thank you, Valerie, for going above and beyond. Next, we will be recognizing and celebrating the Community Beautification Awards. The Community Beautification Awards are chosen by members of a beautification nomination panel to recognize outstanding residential and commercial properties in the areas of landscaping, renovation, and overall appearance. Panel members are asked to submit nominations for properties which they believe fit the criteria of being well-maintained and demonstrating pride in their neighborhood. Residents are also invited to submit nominations as well. Tonight, we would like to thank the members of that beautification committee, Joe Betaglia, Jack Evanella, Matt Bartlett, Daniel Collins, and Anita Gilthillan for their hard work with this program, and I think that all of them are here tonight, so I'd like to invite you to come on forward, please, and help us with the presentations.[1026.76][1026.76](APPLAUSE). Each of the awardees tonight will be receiving a certificate, as well as Mr. Betaglia, if you could be Vanna White and show one of those great signs they have to place in their windows or their yards. They'll have that as well, so they could tell their neighbors that they have been recognized. Thank you, Vanna, you did a great job. Tonight, also, we have a PowerPoint presentation, so you can look at the featured properties on there as we call these folks forward. First house, the Usivia Residence on Virginia Avenue.[1064.01][1064.01](APPLAUSE). The Little Residence on Ada Avenue. Thank you very much. Would you like to say anything about your house?[1085.83][1085.83](LAUGHTER).
I will just say, a lot of time on your knees.[1094.01][1094.01](LAUGHTER).
The Hogan Residence on Oak Grove Drive.[1104.01][1104.01](APPLAUSE). The Ban Residence on Pinehurst Street.
Unlike him, my gardener spends a lot of time on his knees, and he's done a very good job, so he needs the award probably more than I do, but thank you very much.
The Messstad Residence on Indian Springs.[1140.33][1140.33](APPLAUSE). The Totkin Horse Residence on Cimarron Trail.[1151.01][1151.01](APPLAUSE). The Wayne Residence on Glenwood Avenue.
My wife and I decided to comply with the water saving, and we got the idea, or rather, my wife got the idea of replanting our place, and I think I went a little crazy in buying all sorts of plants, and when this man came out to give me this award notice, I thought he was gonna give me a citation for doing something wrong.[1194.83][1194.83](LAUGHTER). In any event, I was delighted, and I want to thank the City of Glendora for nominating our place.
And on Sellers Street, A Splendor Living.
We just want to thank you for letting us, you know, including us in this award.
The Vance Residence.[1237.01][1237.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much for acknowledging our family. I've called Glendora my home for 30-plus years and raised two boys here, so thank you so much.
The Hang Residence on Wallen.
Hi, thank you for nominating us.[1281.33][1281.33](APPLAUSE).
Belora Residence on Woodland Lane.[1290.01][1290.01](APPLAUSE). The Miller Residence on Foothill.
I had absolutely nothing to do with any of that. It was between my father-in-law and my wife, so thank you.[1311.33][1311.33](LAUGHTER).
The Prentons Residence on Heritage Oak Drive.
We were fortunate enough to move to Glendora about five years ago and find a house with very nice architecture. It's been a lot of fun trying to keep it up, and I'd like to thank the committee. It was very nice.
The Imperial Residence on Burnaby.[1348.01][1348.01](APPLAUSE). And the Dysher Residence on Dalton.[1356.33][1356.33](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. It was definitely a surprise one day when we had a knock at the door and we were told that our home was nominated for this award. My husband Eric and I are truly appreciative of the recognition. It's wonderful that we all live in a city that recognizes homeowners that put just a little extra care into their yard. We really are fortunate to live in such a beautiful community of homes, so thank you so much for this honor. We really appreciate it, and have a good evening.[1391.13][1391.13](APPLAUSE).
Again, we congratulate all of our awardees tonight. Again, thank you to our great committee for all of your work in finding these homes to recognize, and we appreciate everyone's ownership and displaying their pride and taking care of their property, so thank you very much for your help as well.[1415.26][1415.26](APPLAUSE). Our next category tonight that we'll be recognizing is along the lines of our Adopt a Park program. The Glendora Adopt a Park program is designed to promote civic pride, and it offers individuals, groups, and businesses a chance to directly contribute with the hands-on approach to keep our parks and trails clean. I know that our director, LaShawn Beck there, says an amen to this, that it has helped her department and is a great benefit to them. It provides an opportunity to donate a memorial tree, a park bench, or other park amenities that will serve the community, beautify our green space, and give folks a chance to participate. Tree donors can choose a tree from a list and work with community services on a location for the tree to be planted. So tonight, the following individuals and groups have donated their time and resources as part of our Adopt a Park program. And would you please come up as I call your name? I think the first group, I don't believe there's a representative, APU City Links. Do we have anyone from that this evening? City Links program is a volunteer program that works with APU University and the City of Glendora, as well as the City of Azusa and other cities, where first-year students engage in service to those communities. And under this program, they have done tremendous things, working with community services on the Garcia Trail, Mystic Canyon Trail, Big Dalton Canyon Wilderness Park, and they have done many great things, and we are appreciative of all of the work. On October 3rd, they worked trails maintenance at Mystic Canyon Trail, Ole Hammer Park, teen center re-landscaping for water conservation. There were 17 participants in that. And October 10th, the teen center re-landscaping for water conservation, 25 participants, Louis Pompey Memorial Sports Park cleanup and the surrounding fields, and there were 57 participants for that. And also trails maintenance at Ren Meacham Trail, where there were 55 students participating in that. And just so that none of you are confused, because we know oftentimes that the subject of Garcia Trail comes up, that is technically, the majority of that is in the City of Azusa, and I believe that was a project they worked with on Azusa, a workday there, but they continue to work with us on our trails as well. And so let's give a big thank you to APU City Links.[1581.01][1581.01](APPLAUSE). The next group, I know they are here, Keller Williams Realty. They worked on cleanup at Fink Beiner Park, painted benches. I want to see the paint on your hands. Oh, yeah, right there, very good. Graffiti removal at Louis Pompey Memorial Sports Park. They pulled weeds, and I know this isn't the first time that Keller Williams Realty has helped in projects, so we thank you for that, and thank you for taking a genuine interest in the community, and especially in our parks. So thank you very much. Anything you'd like to say about your service project?
I guess just one of the most fulfilling things we find is to contribute to something that matters, and our city is important in the parks, so thank you.[1632.01][1632.01](APPLAUSE).
This next individual, Mr. Gordon Rowley, if you'll come forward, please. He is no stranger to parks or our trails. He is synonymous. When we think of our trails, we think of Gordon Rowley. And so one of the many projects that you did this time as part of your Adopt a Park program was the Coulter Pine Trailhead and Dunn Canyon Trailhead. You cleared shrubbery at the parking area for vehicles, removed dead plant material. And so for those of us that park there, we especially appreciate you clearing that space for us, and this is just one of many things that you do to maintain our wilderness areas, so thank you.[1691.73][1691.73](APPLAUSE).
Yeah, a little history. I migrated to California in 1956, and I also migrated to Big Dalton Canyon. And I fell in love with Big Dalton Canyon in 1956, and I've been there ever since. In 1985, I married a lady by the name of Norma Louise Meacham, and she came to the canyon in 1936 and lived in the house and was raised in the canyon, in the little white house that's now gone. In 1980, when Dick Sweeney started Trails Committee, Troop 483, which there are some here tonight, has participated since 1980, twice a year in Trail Days, and that's quite an accomplishment of 25 years for that troop. We have worked on many, many projects, all of beautification, the rock walls, the trails, everything, our Boy Scouts and projects. And I'm very proud of Big Dalton Canyon. I'm very proud of Troop 483 for their support of Big Dalton Canyon. And also thank the city council, community services, for their support of our project. And also thank the City Council, Community Services, for their support of our projects on the canyon.
As Gordon mentioned, part of the projects and work that takes place is oftentimes part of Eagle Scout projects. And so these projects entail a lot of planning, putting together a team of scouts, hard work, physical labor, under the careful guidance and supervision of the Community Services Department and members of the Glendora Trails Council, Gordon Rowley and Mr. Dick Sweeney. These scouts not only complete steps towards becoming an Eagle Scout, but also greatly contribute to the beautification of our parks and trails. So Angelo Serna, if you can come up, please.[646.23][646.23][applause] Angelo and his team from Troop 483 rebuilt part of the Kaiser Trail, put in two rock walls on narrow switchbacks, making it safe for hikers. So on behalf of the City Council and the Glendora community, we thank you for the significant contributions that have not only kept those trails safe, and not only paved the way for hikers, but also the example that you have set has paved the way for scouts that go after you. So thank you for your commitment, dedication, and living up to the character of an eagle. So thank you.[686.49][686.49][applause] Do you want the rest of you to come up?
All right, hello. So my Eagle project was to build two walls on the Kaiser Trail. I had 27 scouts there, all 27 scouts plus adults, and it took a total of 200 service hours in total. And they worked in the high 90s, triple-digit heat, which I really appreciate them for coming out to help me, and I really appreciate Mr. Rowley and Mr. Bietka for advising me and helping me with my Eagle project along the way.
We appreciate all the work that the various scout groups do on a regular basis. They are a big part of our volunteer contributions to the community, so we thank you for all that you do. Our next category tonight, we will be recognizing citizens and businesses for water conservation, efforts of reduction compared to the 2013 numbers. In case any of you might have missed it, there's in this little thing going on called a drought.[777.62][777.62][laughter] And so as a result of that, in early 2015, the state mandated that each water supplier reduce water usage due to the nearly five-year drought that has gripped the fine state of California. For Glendora, our community is required to reduce its water usage by 36% compared to what we used in 2013. One of the challenges of that is because Glendora, which is always on the cutting edge and ahead of the game, we started conserving back in 2008. So when those numbers came out, we had to reduce even more than we already were, but we are very thankful that citizens have responded to that and met that challenge, and have been doing a great job. Both smaller users and larger users, such as businesses and schools, they have done a tremendous job, and we appreciate that. You see throughout the city, at our parks and our medians, that the city has responded as well, doing its part to conserve and use various types of drought-tolerant landscape. So tonight, these following residences, businesses, schools, and faith communities are just a small sampling of the many folks who've not only met but have taken the challenge further to exceed the standards and conserve their water usage and be leaders in this effort. So if I call your name, if you'd please come forward. First, Church of the Open Door and Pastor Jeremy McClellan.[870.56][870.56][applause] Would you like to say anything about how you cut back on water usage?
Sure. It's been a challenge. We're tucked up on the hill behind St. Lucy's up off Sierra Madre, and we have over 40 acres up there, so it's a definite challenge to cut back, but we're trying to do our part for the city and for the community, so it was worth the effort, so thank you.
Thank you.[900.23][900.23][applause] And one of our other users of water that has a lot of property to maintain, and so the fact that they have done such a tremendous job is indeed something to celebrate, the Glendora Unified School District. And tonight, representing them, Mark Chaldu, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, the guy that has to add up those numbers and make sure that they're saving water. So thank you, Mark.[928.12][928.12][applause]
Of course. First of all, we'd like to thank the city for this recognition. It's a really good thing to recognize the drought and obviously water efficiency that we need to have out there in the community. I thank the community as well as the students. Obviously, drought and water efficiency isn't the most prettiest thing out there that we've all seen, but I thank you for bearing with us as we go through the process and as we continue the process, because we know that the drought will not go away overnight. So with that being said, thank you all, appreciate it.[964.12][964.12][applause]
Next, Grace Church of Glendora and Mike Pettiville, Facilities Director.[974.18][974.18][applause]
On behalf of Grace Church, I just want to say thank you to the city for the acknowledgement. We do have a sports field that took the brunt of the hit, so there's not a whole lot of green grass, but what we have realized that the kids still have a good time, so thanks again for the acknowledgement.
24 Hour Fitness.[1019.54][1019.54][applause] And are you Patty? And Patty is the Operations Manager, so I'm sure that you've had a great hand in making sure that happens.
Thank you. Actually, our members are a representation of this community, and they're very vigilant and let me know if there's anything that's leaking, if there's a faucet that's running too much, so it's thanks to the city and the community that they represent what you guys are trying to do, so, thank you.
Glendora Country Club.[1059.23][1059.23][applause] If you haven't been by the Country Club, you need to drive by there and see the tremendous efforts they have made in doing some new landscaping, which I think has been a beautiful addition in the many other ways, so please share with us.
Thank you. Good evening. The person that really should be here is our Superintendent, Sean Rathge, but he has babysitting duty this evening. He just has a newborn. Sean has done an outstanding job working with the city, working with architects and reducing turf. Of 77 acres of turf that we have at the golf course, we reduced 26 acres, which is a very large number. So our numbers are looking good. Our superintendent is by far the one to get all the credit for this, and it's good to give back to the community in this way.
Walmart. James K. Nolan, our Store Manager.[1120.04][1120.04][applause]
Hi. First, we'd like to say thank you very much for this honor. Basically, it was pretty easy for us. As most of you know, we've been under construction now for well over a year and a half. Unfortunately, we'll still be under construction for another year and a half. But what we were able to do is, the first phase of the remodel, we did the parking lot and restructured all the plants and shrubs to low drought, low-maintenance foliage, which has obviously helped us decrease our water use a lot, so.
And it looks very nice, too. Also, we'd like to recognize the Ludwig Residence.[1171.54][1171.54][applause] And Glendora Community Hospital.[1181.73][1181.73][applause] Ormco Corporation.[1188.18][1188.18][applause] And St. Dorothy School.[1194.23][1194.23][applause] Kathy Jasso, the School Secretary is here.
Hi, just wanted to say the School Principal really wanted to be here, but she had a family commitment, so I jumped at the chance. We're very surprised, but very thrilled to receive the honor.[1216.86][1216.86][applause]
The Mark Conway Residence on Juanita Avenue.[1226.83][1226.83][applause] The Gonzalez Residence on Renwick.[1234.41][1234.41][applause] The Mentor Residence on Juanita.[1240.73][1240.73][applause] The Reynolds Residence on Verdugo.[1246.83][1246.83][applause] And the Zeitz Residence on Bonny Cove.[1252.47][1252.47][applause] We again say thank you very much to all of these faith communities, businesses, and individuals who've gone above and beyond in helping us to conserve water, and thank you to all of our residents for doing your part and helping us meet our goals. At this time, we will be inviting the Yellow Ribbon Committee to come forward. Project Glendora Yellow Ribbon will recognize Glendora's military, men and women who have finished their tour of duty, and this organization are the folks that are responsible for those banners around town. They are the folks who are behind our men and women in military, supporting them, encouraging them, and so we are very appreciative of the work they do, and at this time, I'll invite them to come on in.[1301.04][1301.04][applause]
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to welcome home two young men who have fulfilled their military commitment. I know, I'm sure.[1315.12][1315.12][laughter] And they have recently separated from the service, and they will be receiving their banner that you have seen around town, and then they will also get a certificate of recognition. And sometimes the military members can't always be here, but I think we, if they're not here, we have some family that are here to accept their banners for them. So, are we going to do the video first? So when I call the name, if you're here or if you've got family here, will you please come on up, and we'll give you your banner and certificate? And if you'd like to say something, we'd love to have you say a few words, please. Either you can say something here first, or...
Okay. Hello, I'm Jonathan's mom. His dad's sitting over there, and his sister, her husband, and our granddaughter, Carson. Jonathan is now an Assistant District Attorney in San Joaquin County, so that's way up in the Stockton area, so he couldn't come down, but he did send a little statement, so I'm going to share that with you. During my time in the service, I realized many truths, not only about myself, but also about the human condition. One of those truths was the simplest of concepts, the concept of home. It never ceased to amaze me that of all the reasons to fight, the simple concept of home always ranked amongst the top when speaking with my fellow soldiers. You see, home defines you, it makes you who you are, it impresses upon you certain values, experiences, and people, which shape how you see the world. Most importantly, during a war, it's where you're trying to get back to. For me, home was a small city in the foothills of the San Gabriel Mountains on the outskirts of Los Angeles. I was raised in its schools, kept safe on its streets, and most importantly, it was my personal America, a place where I was able to experience firsthand the promises and joy of freedom. So while my brothers fought for small towns like North Liberty, Indiana, Hempville, Texas, Lake Stevens, Washington, and Crookston, Minnesota, I proudly fought for my hometown, our piece of America, Glendora, California. I would like to thank my family, the Yellow Ribbon Committee, and the City of Glendora for all of your support during my time in the service. May God bless you for your work on behalf of our veterans, and God bless America.
And our other member tonight is Travis Singleton.[1787.47][1787.47][applause]
Thank you. I don't have quite something that's...
I don't have quite something as prepared that was very beautiful. My name is Gail Sharp. I'm Travis's mother. I want to thank the Yellow Ribbon Committee for recognizing him. Just a little history about service. My son joined the Army, actually, the Army Reserves when he was a junior in high school. He was actually a little bit older. So, he just turned 18. And he said, "Mom, this is what I want to do. I want to be of service." He went to boot camp between his junior and senior year. He did his AIT after he graduated and has continued on. He actually, the reason he's not here today is he continues his service with the U.S. Border Patrol. He's stationed in Texas. It's a little bit of a drive. But he continues his service to his community, and it just changed communities. I personally want to thank the Yellow Ribbon Committee. I know that when he was overseas, seeing his banner and being able to drive by his banner really gave me a lot of hope and it gave me support. And I know that there's other family members that also felt that with their loved ones' banners up. And I just, for those of you who don't have children in service, it's indescribable the support you get from the committee, like the Yellow Ribbon Committee, because it makes you feel like you're not alone. Because when your sons and daughters are in danger, you feel very alone. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Please join with me again in thanking our men and women in the military. We are able to be here tonight because of the sacrifices they make day in and day out. And we will never forget those who paid the ultimate price. Thank you very much for being here tonight to be part of this time of celebration. Congratulations again to all of our recipients. Have a great evening and we look forward to seeing you all at the next one. Thank you.